Hey guys, my name is Emily Lane with NP GY. Tonight, we're going to go over two case studies. The first will be on abdominal pain and the second one will be on heart palpitations. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you can see the case studies we're going to go over tonight. I'll also share the resource that I pulled these from. It is a wonderful, wonderful book that I adore. I think it has amazing differentials. You'll be able to see again some examples here of what all is included. And there's 101 case studies in this book. They are going to release a second edition soon with different case studies. But here's 101 case studies. It is fantastic. It was written by a PA. I've actually talked to him before. He's great. So let's start with this first case study. This is abdominal pain. So we'll go through, we'll do the HPI review of systems, relevant history, allergies meds, PE. And then we'll go into different questions. And the answers in this book are amazing, super well thought out, really good differentials. Lots and lots of room for education. All right. So here we have the chief complaint of abdominal pain. A 53 year old woman presents with complaints of gnawing and a constant six out of 10 abdominal pain that started the day prior. She states she's afraid to eat anything for fear that the pain will worsen. She reports an episode similar to this occurring five years ago after returning from home, returning home from overseas travel. She recalls being told by a physician that she probably had food poisoning, was given an antibiotic and felt better two to three days later. She says this has not happened since. She cannot think of anything she may have eaten that could have caused this pain as it came out of nowhere. Her last meal was a breakfast of rye toast and yogurt with blackberries yesterday. She reports being very feverish, sweaty and nauseated when the pain first started. She denies vomiting, but does admit to a few bouts of dry heaves. She is unable to point to where it hurts the most, saying it's all over. She admits to feeling bloated and having multiple bowel movements with her last one just prior to presentation. She states her stools have gone from soft to loose, thin ribbons, and now nothing at all. She feels a need to evacuate her bowels, but nothing comes out. She worries about having bloody stools similar to five years ago, but has not seen that yet. She denies dysuria. She admits to having a high stress job, but denies ever being diagnosed with IBS or IBD. She has not traveled recently, nor has she been around anyone with similar symptoms. Her last colonoscopy was five years ago and was unremarkable. Patient's review of systems is positive for subjective fever, meaning she did not take her temperature, but felt feverish with chills, diaphoresis, difficulty sleeping due to abdominal pain, dry mouth gird and reduced appetite. She denies recent unintentional weight loss or gain. Her review of systems is negative for trouble swallowing, rectal bleeding, black or tarry stools, excessive belching or passing gas, liver problems, hepatitis and jaundice. So at this point, you need to go ahead and start getting ideas in your head about what kind of things are you going to want to look at on her physical examination? What kind of diagnostics would you want to order? And even some differentials at this point are already going to start popping in your head. So if you want to type in the chat, anything specific that you're thinking as diagnostics or differential diagnosis, go ahead and start thinking about those, thinking out loud in the chat. The patient has a relevant history, more GI issues. Okay, so she has GERD. She has biliary dyskinesia with resultant laparoscopic cholecystectomy. So biliary dyskinesia is when the biliary duct spasms causing it to like pinch off and gallbladder bile cannot then exit the gallbladder properly, which sometimes will result in gallstones or cholecystitis, cholelethiasis, all of that. And so you end up having to get a cholecystectomy. Some patients do find on, I think it's Lexapro, it's an SSRI, helps with biliary dyskinesia. But she has had that and has had a laparoscopic cholecystectomy. She also has a history of uterine fibroids with resultant full abdominal hysterectomy. So that's another surgery. We're already thinking about what kind of strictures does this woman have in her abdomen from all of these surgeries? Nephrolithiasis and menopause. She drinks one to two glasses of wine with dinner two or three nights a week. It's not every evening, but she does drink wine. Our family history is non-contributory, so no relevant history for this diagnosis. She is allergic to erythromycin, truly allergic with hives, no known food allergies. You'll find most of the erythromycin allergies on your charts just to be diarrhea. And we know, we don't even prescribe erythromycin anymore because of how much diarrhea it causes. So a lot of times we can pull that off, but in this case, this patient actually got hives with erythromycin. She is currently taking pantoprazole for her GERD, calcium and vitamin D. She's 53, she's post-menopausal, she's had hysterectomy. So she needs calcium and vitamin D to prevent osteopenia. So everything makes sense so far, except for this kind of acute presentation, kind of an acute abdomen going on with full pain across the whole abdomen. So let's look at her actual PE. She has 99.8. She feels a little warm. That's not a true fever. Who knows? You know, it's not specific on whether or not she's taken Tylenol or Ibuprofen. Not specific on, maybe it was higher earlier today. Puls 86, respiratory 14. Blood pressure is elevated, 146 over 94. She does not have a history of hypertension. She is in pain however, and that can raise blood pressure. Usually we see isolated systolic elevation of blood pressure when someone's in pain. We do see both elevated here. You can see both elevated with pain as well. Let's see, she's about 5'8", weighs 168, BMI 25, so upside and normal. Well dressed and well nourished female who appears younger than stated age in obvious discomfort laying in the fetal position on the examination table. She is alert and oriented. She has non-icteric sclera injected, conjunctiva pink bilaterally, pearla, ENT mouth. She's got a dry mucosa, and that makes sense. She's been having diarrhea. She is a little bit dehydrated right now. No lesions, patent oropharynx, 1+, bilateral tonsils, tonsils pink without exudate. All right, whoever has on their mic, please mute it.
I'm trying to help you.
No, please mute, thank you. All right. Okay, so where was I? ENT mouth, dry mucosa, no lesions, good. 1+ bilateral tonsils without exudate. That really could be from the GERD that she is experiencing. Her neck is supple with anterior cervical lymphadenopathy bilaterally. Lungs are clear to auscitation bilaterally. Her heart, S1, S2, regular rate rhythm without murmurs, so cardiac is fine. So then the most of the, most of the issues we've seen so far, dry mucosa, pink tonsils, some lymphadenopathy. Heart and lungs are clear. Let's look at peripheral vascular. Warm throughout. All pulses are 2+, symmetric bilaterally, cap refill less than two seconds throughout. Great, so we're not remarkably dehydrated. We're just a little dehydrated. We've got dry mucosa. Her abdomen, which is where we really want to spend some time. We want to make sure that we're going through all of the different abdominal like checks that we can do. Are we doing McBurney's? Are we doing Robsing? Are we looking at all of those different things? Distended abdomen, well healed surgical scars in the mid epigastric region. Remember she's had her gallbladder out, she's had hysterectomy. Right upper quadrant and suprapubic region. So she's got three sections of scars. Hyperactive bowel sounds times four, diffuse tender mid to left lower quadrant with rebound tenderness. That to me, right there, is the most important piece of information that we've gotten so far and that finally helps me pinpoint something. What do you think that is right there? That one piece of information? Why is that piece of information so important to me? No thrills, no brewies, no CVA tenderness. Genital and rectal plus, she's got rectal tone, positive gyac, no external hemorrhoids. Positive gyac means we do have some blood in her stool. Neurological, we have cranial nerves intact, speech and gait appropriate. All right, so again, what are you guys, what are you guys thinking? Go ahead and put in the chat what you're thinking as far as differentials. What are we thinking so far? So we've definitely got this left lower quadrant tenderness. We've got some acute abdomen going on. We've got one vote for appendicitis so far. What is the differential diagnosis? So these are going to be some differential diagnoses. These are in no specific orders to help us not give away the diagnosis straightaway. But let's look at some of the different things on here that we could consider. Why we should consider them and why we should pull them out. Again, this is a wonderful resource, really well thought out. You get to learn about each of these differentials, what things point to it, what things don't point to it, why you should consider it. Let's look at IBS. So IBS is a chronic functional disorder depicted by abdominal pain coupled with bowel habit alterations with the feeling of incomplete defecation and no clear etiology. This has occurred to the patient in the past, although she's never had this diagnosis. She also has a high stress job and a history of biliary dyskinesia and GERD, which the current literature suggests are possible links. So IBS sounds, sounds pretty good. I mean, especially the incomplete evacuation, the all over abdominal pain and distension. Inflammatory bowel disease, that would be things like ulcerative colitis or Crohn's disease. We could consider this. We do have some all over pain. We do have hematekhesia. So let's consider it, maybe why or why not? All right, so this often causes diarrhea with hematekhesia of variable amounts. IBD includes again ulcerative colitis and Crohn's, neither of which the patient at age 53 has ever been diagnosed with having. Although it can occur at any age, most of these will have an onset before the age of 35. So that's definitely important to think of. That she is older and most of the time Crohn's and ulcerative colitis are diagnosed in a younger patient. It can happen. You cannot rule everything out for every patient just because of an age that it's supposed to happen at. So we're going to keep this one on the back burner. Not as likely. Ulcerative colitis is a chronic and recurrent disease involving diffuse mucosal inflammation of the colon and rectum. Crohn's disease involves lesions of the GI tract from the mouth to anus. The patient did not present with mouth lesions or fissures and lesions upon her rectal exam. So again, this one doesn't seem to be very high on our list. Acute diverticulitis is high on the differential. Age and sex are appropriate for this disease. In addition to the fact that she has nausea, distension, left lower quadrant pain, lack of flatus, obstipation and stressful life. Her last meal was full of particulate matter. That was another thing that kind of really stuck out to me is that her last meal that she had was rye and blackberry seeds. These could very easily get trapped into diverticula. You'll find diverticulitis kind of popping up right after a meal that has all the right things in it. Another option that we should consider here is ischemic colitis. This would present with bloody stools, diffuse abdominal pain. We see it as in older adults who have atherosclerotic disease due to transient occurrences of non-inclusive mesenteric ischemia. This pain is often difficult for the patient to localize. Although it's unlikely evaluating the abdominal pain with imaging would be recommended to rule this out. Anytime you get someone popping up that's pretty acute looking, an acute abdomen, it's not unlikely that you're going to end up ordering some sort of visual diagnostic in order to kind of rule out some of the red flags. Even though you can be pretty sure it's one thing, but maybe it doesn't need diagnostics, it is important to rule out the red flags, the acute abdomens, especially something like ischemic colitis. So not something to keep in mind is that imaging may be necessary. Mesenteric ischemia compromises the blood supply to the superior mesenteric artery. Blood stools and diffuse abdominal pain are the chief complaints of older patients who have atherosclerotic disease due to transient occurrences of non-inclusive to occlusive mesenteric ischemia. So again, this patient doesn't have a history of atherosclerosis. So this pain is often difficult for the patient to localize and is made worse after eating. Both of those things she absolutely complained about. She couldn't pinpoint where her pain is. It was worse after she ate. The patient also, patients will also admit to unintentional weight loss. This does not, that part does not present in the patient's history. She does not have unintentional weight loss. So again, some of the puzzle pieces will fit together, but there's this one very important piece that won't fit in together to a puzzle. And that's how you rule out a differential. You start with a broad list. And you have all these different puzzle pieces and you're trying to figure out which ones fit all together. And you're waiting for a diagnosis where all the pieces kind of fit together. That makes the most complete picture, but you do have to consider all of these things. And again, ruling them out is just as important as finding the correct one. We don't want to miss a red flag while looking for the answer. Small bowel obstruction is secondary to adhesions. That could be possibility. That was one that I immediately considered when reading the first part of her chart before I got to the second part and saw the left lower quadrant pain. I was concerned about an obstruction, maybe a stricture or something like that. But she is having, she had a lot of bowel movements. She was having a lot amount of diarrhea. She is now complaining of not being able to go, but feeling like she has to. So that part doesn't match totally, but anytime that someone has an open abdominal or pelvic surgery, I'm definitely worried about adhesions and strictures. So she has had again, both a hysterectomy and a cholecystectomy. That could cause an obstruction. I don't think it's an obstruction because again, we've got left lower quadrant pain. She did evacuate and have a significant amount of diarrhea first. So that one's not high on my list. Given the six diagnoses we have here, which one do you think it is of these six? Which one do you think is the most likely of these six? Yep. We've got some private messages coming in. Yes, I agree with you guys. Yeah, I agree that it's acute diverticulitis. Yeah, I really agree with you guys too. This is probably the most likely diagnosis. However, we cannot confirm this diagnosis until we see it. We are going to do some lab testing and imaging. What kind of lab testing and imaging are we going to do? We'll get down to that in number four. First, let's stop and look at patho fiz. Let's look how this works. You know, diverticula are mucosal herniations through the wall of the colon found in areas of natural weakness. The colon anatomically possesses one inner layer of muscle circumferentially and three ribbons of longitudinal outer muscle. The nutrient blood supply found in the wall of the colon is the vasorectal. The weakest areas of the colonic wall are where the vasorectal penetrate the inner circular muscle layer of the colon. The sigmoid colon is where most of particular diseases found is this is where intraluminal pressures are the highest. What does this mean? What does it mean by intraluminal pressures? So when stool gets to the left lower quadrant, when it gets to the sigmoid colon, it is the most firm that it is going to be. Most of the water has been pulled out of it. All of the seedy fibers that are not digested are bulked into this formed stool and are more likely to be able to get into those out pouches. So this is the area where diverticulitis occurs. So again, first, we naturally just have these diverticula. That is okay. We aren't worried about diverticula. What we are worried about is when there is inflammation of the diverticulum. So diverticulitis is the inflammation of one or more diverticula. Either fecal matter itself or particles of the undigested food have collected. Again, that's the seedy, fibrous type of things that will get stuck down in there. This causes obstruction, distension, increased mucous secretion and an overgrowth of normal colonic bacteria. Then you're going to have some vascular compromise followed by micro or macro perforations. That's where we're going to have little, small tears, very, or very large tears. It really depends on the degree of the disease. If the perforations are large enough, you may end up with an abscess formation around that area of the colon or rupture, lots of bleeding. Most of the time, you're going to deal with mild cases of this. Still very alarming for the patient, still very uncomfortable. Absolutely needs to be addressed, but isn't going to be a macro perforation with an abscess and rupture every single time you see this. Why is that? Because there's pericolic fat in the mesentery wall. The mesentery will wall off inflammation and small perforations. But recurrent attacks of diverticulitis result in the development of scar tissue that can cause narrowing and obstruction of the colonic lumen. That would be a problem if we consistently had this scar tissue coming around this area of the colon where it causes kind of this narrowing, hardening, obstruction. You know, you don't, you don't have a flexible tube, a flexible colon anymore that can have peristalsis and move stool on down if it's strictured, narrow, hardened, et cetera. So our next step here is what kind of diagnostic tools are we really going to need to be able to diagnose this patient? First, anytime we're thinking about infection, we're thinking about getting a CBC. We're also going to get a CMP. Our GI has been altered in some way we need to worry about. What are our electrolytes look like? How's our kidneys functioning? How are our liver functioning? Are we absorbing things properly? Do a UA, do a CT. CT is going to evaluate the abdomen and pelvis. We're going to use contrast in this situation. We're evaluating abdominal pain. So what do we see when we go in? Of course, we're going to have a white blood cell. It's going to be elevated. On the CMP, her BUN is elevated, not her creatinine. So this does mean we're suffering from dehydration, not chronic kidney disease. On her CT abdomen and pelvis, there is pericolic fat stranding with bowel wall thickening at the distalmost sigmoid colon consistent with diverticulitis. So what are our next steps in management? How are we going to approach this patient? We reviewed for criteria for inpatient treatment versus outpatient treatment. Based on the available information, the patient was recommended for outpatient therapy in connection with strict ED precautions. Not something you're always going to want to chart. Strict ED precautions and kind of what you taught them or told them. What's, what's the big moment where hmm, you've got to go to the hospital right now? First, she was made NPO. She was recommended to continue water and fluid for the next two days to do a bowel rest. We have to allow that bowel to heal. It takes about two days for that to be, we're going to start back on a pretty slow diet here too. But two days for it to rest, heal. We're also going to start them on antibiotics. We're going to use flagell and ciprofloxacin. We are going to use some of the not so common medications because this is likely going to be anaerobic. Bacteria causing this infection. So we're going to use flagell and ciprofloxacin. She will also be given promethazine for her nausea. They actually gave her some IM promethazine for her nausea. She was asked to advance her diet very slowly to clear liquids on day three, but only if her symptoms were going away. So again, we are going to have a very slow advance on this person's diet. She was recommended to follow up in two to three days. She is to go to the ER if her fever reaches 101.5, pain increases, there's vomiting, or if she starts experiencing bloody stools, she is to follow up with a GI in one week. And a colonoscopy will need to be scheduled in six to eight weeks after her recovery. So we're going to diagnose it off the CT. We'll follow up later with the colonoscopy. And at that point, they're in GI's hands. So then number six says, again, this would be you working in the workbook. When you get this book, it is a workbook. So each of these places are blank inside of the workbook. And then you log into the online component to get your answers. I just go ahead and use this portion so you guys can see the answers straight away. But you do the workbook and then you can go and check your answers online. So review of reliable recent reference regarding risk factors and treatment approaches for this diagnosis. Provide references for your response. So you can grade yourself. Log on here and then see this. Diverticula are out pouchings from within the colonic wall, secondary to weakness in the outer wall, allowing the inner colonic wall to protrude through. Although exact mechanism is not known, the pouches are considered to be created by increased pressure placed on the inner wall through straining during constipation. Low fiber, high fat diet is also suspect. Abnormal motility, hereditary factors. So we want to prevent constipation. If your patient's suffering from constipation, you want to consider that they may end up with diverticulitis. Antibiotics are the mainstay therapy. Mild cases can be managed in the outpatient setting using conservative therapy. Once the CT scan shows that it is an uncomplicated disease, again, you don't have any, don't have any abscesses or ruptures. Effective resection of the involved bowel segment is recommended by guidelines if they have three episodes of uncomplicated diverticulitis. Patients who have been successfully treated need to be reassessed by GI within six to eight weeks. So that's an important thing for you to know. Okay, so if you're treating diverticulitis as a primary care provider, which is absolutely acceptable, you do need to refer them to GI within the next six to eight weeks. And that's kind of a reasonable timeline. You can usually get somebody in in that amount of time. Patients who remain symptom free will require a colonoscopy to rule out malignancy. In the setting of acute diverticulitis and inflammation, colonoscopy is contraindicated due to increased risk of perforation. Right, we already have a weak spot. We've got something that's bleeding and open. We don't want to go in there and do a colonoscopy and cause a further rupture, tearing or anything like that. So again, your diagnostic, your choice diagnostic test is your CT. You would absolutely expect an elevated white blood cell count. So doing your CBC with this is good. Those are your, kind of your approaches. And then doing your flagell and your cipro. Or yeah, ciprofloxacin. Then it goes in and offers you how to do your ICD10s and CPTs for this case. And in this case, we're going to use K57.33. So diverticulitis of the large intestine without perforation or abscess with bleeding. So this is good. We have not only our diagnosis, but we have our modifiers down here as well. You will notice that modifiers are often used on ICD10s, not just using something alone. The more modified, appropriate modifiers that you use, the more likely you will be properly reimbursed by insurance. So you'll see K means it's a GI diagnosis. Each letter goes with a different body system. K is all your GI stuff. Then you'll have 57 typically means like, again, I don't have this stuff memorized. This is just the formula. It goes, it goes each way. K is going to be your body system. Usually your first number is your diagnosis and then you've got some modifiers on the end. So you want to make sure you're not leaving your ICD10 codes as just like diverticulitis unknown or unspecified. It is best to pick as the most specific, most modified diagnosis that you can get. Again, that will increase the chances of you being reimbursed properly. So this is due to the past medical history that we got during her HPI, the review of systems and physical examination findings. Age-appropriate female patient. On the visit notes, it is important to mention that even though there is no confirmation, this is the working diagnosis based on all of the information available. In this case, we could use, and this is the way I actually would typically prefer it. This has an alternate approach is using separate ICD10 codes for all the presenting symptoms. I typically prefer to do that until I get my confirmed diagnosis on imaging. So you could do what we call problem ICD10s. These are symptoms. So there are ICD10s for symptoms and there are ICD10s for true diagnoses, true illnesses, that kind of thing. So I typically, when I'm ordering a diagnostic, will use a symptom ICD10 to order the diagnostic. Then once I have the diagnostic, you can give them a formal ICD10 code. So again, you could just grab the codes for left lower quadrant abdominal pain, nausea, distension, lack of flatus, obstipation. Throw any of those in there. You can use any of those to get your, I would just pick left lower quadrant abdominal pain to order my CT. And then once I got my confirmatory, I would use that code. For this one, we are going to use the EM code 99215 because you spent about 40 minutes with this patient. It was high complexity. I'm looking at a moderately acute abdomen here. So she gets that 99215. Do not be scared of those 215s. If you spend 40 minutes with a patient, you write down that you spent 40 minutes with that patient, you can do a 215. All right, how are we going to educate this patient? There's some specific things that this patient needs to know to prevent this from happening again. Diet and hydration, no food for two days, clear liquids after three days, then the BRAT diet after four days. Take all medications according to directions. Do not take, do not drink alcohol because it will react with the flagell. And remember that was important. She told us that she drank alcohol three times a week. She cannot do that while she's taking the flagell. Follow up with the GI, need a colonoscopy, follow ED precautions. We can also, and in the future, maybe at a follow-up visit or with GI, specifically talk about foods that she is probably going to need to avoid. Again, those seedy foods that can get stuck in these diverticula. Typically, this question is pretty much the same on every single one. And this answer is pretty much the same on every single one. So for this one, we have medical or legal concerns. Of course, if, the problem here is that if we did not properly educate them or chart ED precautions and they ended up being remarkably ill, had sepsis and death, and that we get missed somehow, you could be liable for that. But generally, if you chart very well, chart that the patient had a mild uncomplicated disease, that you've done imaging, that you've given ED precautions. Justify why you kept them outpatient. They are going to be okay. Somebody, some people are going to leave your office and take a turn for a worse that you could not have predicted. So do your best, chart well, really make it obvious about why you did not admit somebody, especially with an acute abdomen. And chart, always, always chart that you gave them ED precautions and education on when to go to the hospital. You can be as specific as you want. I recommend having like dot phrases saved. So you can go ahead and just type in a dot phrase. And what I mean by that is when I was working with Epic, and Epic is very common, very popular. I'm sure other charting systems have similar features, hopefully, where you could just type in like, what our system that I had once saved was like, .ER follow-up. And it would automatically drop in a note section that would give like all the reasons why someone needed to go to the ER. So it would be like pain and fever, dizziness, things like that. All of those things could get dropped in.[1776.06] All of those things could get dropped in and then I could tailor it to, to the, the disease or the diagnosis. If there was some specific thing I wanted them to look out for. Uh, but get your dot phrases done. You will thank yourself after being just lazy and typing the same note thirty times. You'll eventually just save it as a dot phrase, so you'll stop typing it in over and over again. Um, the next section, again, this one kind of looks very similar on every single one of the answers. What kind of people are going to be involved in a case like this? Obviously, your support staff, you yourself, radiology, pharmacy, GI. So again, everybody's going to be involved. You're going to have this interdisciplinary collaborative approach to this. And then bedside manner question, what would your communication style or approach be with this patient? And that can just be your own kind of personal thing is how do you approach patients who are dealing with something acute that may be a little, have some anxiety? Especially since she already has a lot of work related stress. How do we approach this patient? So that can be kind of a personal thought, little space to journal out there. Next, we have our outcome and our insight from the PCP. And this is my, probably my favorite section. Some of them are really long, some of them are really brief. But the patient themselves actually get to journal what they, not the patient, the primary care provider that presented this case study for this book. Gets to actually journal out their thoughts here. Get, tell us about their outcome, give us an insight. And I find this part really helpful as a clinician. Cause you really get inside their head. So let's see the outcome. And you get to follow up with the patient, which is great. The patient's lab results indicated infection and dehydration. The CT scan found pericolic fat straining with bowel wall thickening at the distal most sigmoid colon. Again, that's where we're going to find our diverticulitis. The treatment of the patient received in the primary care office allowed her symptoms to abate rather quickly. This may have been her second episode of diverticulitis. First was the one that we think got mistaken for a foodborne illness. So it's possible that this is her second episode of diverticulitis. I know family history of diverticular disease, but is trying to do a better job of staying well hydrated, adding fiber. Eating as healthy as she can and working on ways to reduce her work related stress. Again, you do want to get, let me clarify that you do want to get fiber, you just don't want to get so much seedy fiber. A colonoscopy performed eight weeks after her initial visit demonstrated no active disease, polyps or lesions. She will undergo another colonoscopy in five years if she does not experience another episode before then. Insight from the PCP. The patient took an active role in her health, asking for references she could read to learn more about diverticular disease. She wants to inform her only sibling as she does not want anyone to go through what she experienced. She did admit this episode was very similar to her experience five years ago, but did not seek follow up care at that time because she was too busy with work. Patient education went a long way with her as she is taking the steps to slow down and take care of herself first, rather than worry about the nuances of her high stress career. This patient is well established in our practices and is no longer timid about coming in for concerns she used to consider as mi- as minor or not worthy of medical attention. Helpful patient education, allowing the patient to make informed decisions on her own behalf. And having genuine conversations in private to alleviate fears goes a long way in maintaining the confidence of your patient. That was a great one. Okay, so that one again, bad abdominal pain in a fifty three year old female and it ended up being diverticulitis. So we're going to go ahead and take just a few minutes break real quick. Let me catch my breath and drink some water. And then we'll get started on our next one, which will be heart palpitations. I'll see you guys soon. Sure, can you hear me?
Uh, so we have a sixty four year old woman presents to her regular PCP complaining of chest palpitations. She was watching TV and suddenly felt her heart started racing and pounding. She became lightheaded and felt a bit better after, or after a while. She repeats, she hears her heart beating when laying down. She is concerned and now presents for evaluation. She reports having mild palpitations in the past, but nothing like this. She has a history of atrial fibrillation and was taken off her blood thinners by her neurologist and oncologist. She was diagnosed with kidney cancer five months ago and is now four months post right nephrectomy. She denies any chest pain or syncope. She reports that she never refilled her previous medication and she did not follow up her PCP post surgery. Resist, review of systems, the patient's RS is positive for chest palpitations, generalized weakness and shortness of breath. She's negative for weight loss or gain, fever, chills, vomiting, diarrhea, constipation and chest pain.
Yeah, so right off the bat, we're finding somebody who's got multiple specialists on board. Who has not been doing appropriate follow up and hasn't been seeing her primary care provider, who is her gatekeeper to all of her specialists, right? We do a lot of care coordination. We're in charge of like, have you followed up with this person? Well, these medications seriously interact. I don't know if this specialist and this specialist know that they've done this. Maybe they don't all have the same charting system. So that's what we're doing as the gatekeepers immediately right off the bat. We're like, ooh, we have some people who just aren't talking to each other. So what kind of relevant history does this patient have? She's got a history of hypertension, renal cancer, coronary artery disease, GERD and a systolic murmur. She also has a new lung lesion. Her surgical history is positive for a nephrectomy four months ago. She is a widow and lives with her only child and unmarried son. She denies tobacco use, alcohol use or any illicit drug use. She has a family history of CAD hypertension, type two B diabetes, but no family history of cancer, even though she does have renal cancer that has potentially metastasized to her lungs. Um, allergies, no known drug allergies or food allergies. She's taking um diltiazem but presents with an empty pill bottle, which she has not refilled. Lasenapril, metoprolol, which she has not refilled and aspirin. So she's potentially still taking her lasenapril and her aspirin, but not her dilt or her metoprolol. So that's her rate control medications that she's not taking right now. So that's where we're probably going to have to address some things. On her examination, her tenth is ninety eight point three, pulse is a hundred and thirty. Respiratory rate is eighteen, blood pressure one ten over seventy four. The patient weighs a hundred seventy eight pounds. She is five three, which puts her BMI at thirty one, so she is overweight. She is lethargic, she is not in acute distress psychiatric, she smiles, is cooperative and answers all questions appropriately, though slight. Slightly slow to respond, but states that this is her baseline after her nephrectomy and her surgeon said it was to be expected. Her lungs non labored, chest rise symmetrical, uh lungs clear upon auscultation bilaterally. Heart, of course, this is where we're going to spend most of our time. You're going to want to feel briferally, you're going to want to listen to her heart. Irregular rhythm and rapid heart rate. Systolic murmur writes journal board grade three out of six. So she's got a murmur, we already know about the murmur. But she also has irregular rhythm and rapid heart rate. You want to make sure you auscultate as well as palpate, right? Sometimes we'll have lots of beats here. We want to make sure that we're picking up the same things here and here that these guys match. Neurologic, alert and awake, delayed verbal response, motor and sensory intact, DTRs two plus bilaterally, Romberg is negative. That's good, that means the cerebellar function is intact. Okay, what's our differential diagnosis here? All hard stuff, right? So AFib is the top differential for this patient because she has an irregular rhythm. Has a history of AFib, is off of her dilt and her metoprolol. We're going to perform an EKG as soon as possible to support this diagnosis. Anytime you have a patient that presents with an irregular rate or rhythm, you need to immediately try to capture that on EKG. If you're working in a facility that does not have access to an EKG, you need to send them over to urgent care. Um, and if urgent care is not an option to the ER or same day cardiology appointment. Um, I, as a nurse, I worked in outpatient cardiology in the triage department. And we would often have, we were on the fourth floor of a practice. The first floor was primary care. They would call us and say, hey, can you do an EKG on this person who just presented with this wacky rhythm? Um, that we can feel and hear, but we can't visualize. And so they would pop up to us, have a nurse visit, get the EKG done. Uh, and then go back, you know, we would interpret it, offer any recommendations. Sometimes they would be worked into our schedule for the physicians. Sometimes they would be sent out immediately because if they're presenting within the first forty eight hours, you can potentially do an ablation. So it just kind of depended on how they presented, on whether or not they got worked in. But we, we did do that. Um, for the patients. You want to get the EKG so you can capture it and know what's going on straight away. Uh, six sinus syndrome or any congenital heart disease such as a prolonged QTC can cause palpitations and arrhythmias, but it's unlikely to cause AFib. Aortic stenosis may cause atrial arrhythmias and AFib, but would typically be associated with a systo- with systolic murmur, but not palpitations. This is the less likely diagnosis. A flutter may cause atrial arrhythmias or can cause palpitations. However, the patient's heart rate would typically be regular and in the range of a hundred and fifty. So her heart rate's too low and it's irregular, so not a flutter. She might also be hemat- hemodynamically unstable, blood pressure was solid. Neither is the case here, making this the unlikely diagnosis. Uh, we also have to consider um what causes AFib because many, many things can contribute to AFib. Caffeine, nicotine, hyperthyroidism, sleep apnea, uh coronary artery disease. Again, any, any malformation of the heart valves or heart itself uh can cause tho- those issues past MI. Basically anything that could possibly create an ectopic beat could lead to AFib. And all of those things can create either ill irritability um or an ectopic beat. So hyperthyroidism does end up on this list because it can cause AFib, palpitations and tachyarrhythmias. Uh, this diagnosis is inconsistent with the patient's history and presentation because she doesn't have all the other signs. She is um overweight. Someone with hyperthyroidism basically can't gain weight. They are just skinny little kekeksic people who cannot gain weight, who are constantly hungry. Heart rates up, high temps. Um, amenorrhea, she's a little for that. But anyways, hyperthyroidism does not present, doesn't match the presentation. Again, you have to think about what can cause AFib. We need to rule this out though with TSH. What if she is early in it and it hasn't caused a lot of other systemic issues? I don't know, we have to try it out. Pericardial effusion can cause AFib, but typically presents with chest pain, shortness of breath and diffuse ST elevation on, on EKG in all the needs. So let's look at here, what's our most likely diagnosis? Just the AFib. She was, she had AFib, she went off her meds, didn't go back on them after her surgeries were done. The AFib is a category of tachyarrhythmias characterized by uncoordinated atrial activation. It is caused by an abnormal electrical signal pathway. Signals are not systemically delivered from the SA node, but generated throughout the atria. So you've got all these different little places on top of the atria that are trying to be the SA node. So you know, you've got like thirty SA nodes. This is going to cause quivering of the atria and irregular heartbeat. You're not going to completely empty the atria. You don't completely empty it. You're not going to properly empty the atria uh in order to get blood down into the ventricles, which is going to cause pooling. It causes those palpitation sensations, the shortness of breath sensations. Um, and again, this irreg- uh irregular beat. And again, the heart tries to compensate. We're not moving the blood around properly. We have all these ectopic beats and that's where you get the tachy part of it. Uh, the etiology varies and may include um history, pulmonary disease, ischemia, anemia, atrial um mixoma. I forgot to mention anemia. Anemia can cause tachyarrhythmias because again, the heart's trying to compensate. Sepsis, thyrotoxicosis, thyroid disease and the differential diagnoses listed previously above. We do have to consider, does she just have AFib? Or do we have a root cause? What do we have to do right now? We want to get an EKG at the time of the visit. Again, if you don't have a way to get an EKG, you need to get the patient to have one now. We're also going to do a TSH, pre-T four, CMP. Um, CMP, we want to look at magnesium, that's another option too, because magnesium being off can cause tachyarrhythmia. And then we're going to look over some different results and things at the one week appointment. Diagnostic tests need to be considered. She could get an echo, stress test, EP study, however, the patient was referred to a cardiologist. As a primary care provider, you can order all these cardiology tests. The cardiologist will read the test, give you the results and then let you make a decision on what you, how you want to treat the patient. Or you can refer them to cardiology and let them work the patient up. Um, so you can let them see cardiologists. Or in the case of the fact that she has a dysrhythmia, there is a subcategory of cardiologists called electrophysiologists. When I worked at my clinic, we had seventeen physicians, two of them specialized in electrophysiology, meaning they did all of our ablations. For people who are resistant to um like oral medications or just kind of had been on Coumadin for twenty years. Or just, you know, whatever it was. If you needed to get an ablation, you went to EP. So it's like a subcategory. It's like seeing a GI doctor, but they specialize in hepatitis. So you've got your hepatol- like your specialists inside of your specialty. So EP, electrophysiology. Um, EKG confirmed irregular rhythm and was consistent with suspected diagnosis of AFib. TSH, pre-T four and CMP were, were within normal limits, which is what we expected. What are your next steps? We need to resume hermetoprolol. Um, educate heavily on the consequences of medication non compliance because we need to talk about. At this point, you've allowed your atrium to quiver and sit there and pool and potentially make low clots for the last four months. When we get your heart back to normal. You could potentially, you know, move that clot around if it has been formed. Fortunately, it does seem like she maybe was taking her aspirin, maybe question mark. Some of the wording there indicates maybe not, some of the wording there indicates yes. So we need to do a follow up appointment in one week to discuss her lab results and how she's doing. Again, giving strict ED precautions for elevated heart rates, um even maybe even dizziness with the metoprolol, like it's too strong. All the signs of strokes, MIs, things like that. And then we have to refer her back to her cardiologist. She needs to go back and see them. They need to resume the diltiazem if they need to. It's not got proper control. The prevalence of uh AFib is point four percent to one percent. And yes, lots and lots of people have AFib. It's going to be one of those common ones that you're going to run into. While you may not be managing or diagnosing it, you at times will identify, be the first one to identify that someone's in AFib. A lot of your patients will have AFib. It affects more men than women. Um, AFib is more prevalent in Caucasians and African Americans. Incidence of AFib increases with age, absolutely true. So the incidence of AFib in persons under the age of um forty is less than point one percent. Young people don't have AFib. This increases to one point five oh for eight females over age eighty and two point percent for males over eighty. So that means one in fifty of your men that you're going to run across has AFib. You're going to have at least a good handful of patients in your clinics that have AFib on your panel. Patients with AFib are going to increase risk of stroke. This is especially true for females. The severity of the underlying cardiac disease is important in assessing mortality risks. Um, I'm not sure if they're going to talk about a Chad's VASQ score in here. That's something you may want to research, looking at a Chad's VASQ score about when do you provide someone with anticoagulants? All right, so what are our CPT codes? We are going to have AFib for this patient because we did get a diagnosis. We did see it on the EKG. We can go ahead and give them a diagnosis code. This one just says unspecified AFib. This is true at this time because we don't have a specific reason why this patient has AFib. It's just AFib. Remember, the better we can get, the better our outcomes are as far as reimbursement. This person just has unspecified AFib. This is a nine nine two one four. Uh, we didn't have to work quite as hard to reach this diagnosis because the patient previously had AFib, stopped her meds. I mean, okay, you have AFib. Uh, and you'll also do the CPT code for the EKG. How do we educate this patient? Atrial fibrillation, blood thinners, syncope, like I mentioned earlier, the syncope could be a concern. If not managed properly, what are the legal concerns? Again, that the patient gets an embolic stroke, gets disability, death, anything like that. Um, so we, we have to make sure that we have charted, that we have discussed with our patients, the risks and benefits of anticoagulants and the risks. Associated with not taking the medications properly. And again, you're in a professional collaboration, kind of the same idea here. Got your front support staff, your specialists and anybody who helps you do your diagnostics. After her, so we're going to get our outcomes. So we'll get a little bit of follow up with the patient to see kind of what was going on. Maybe we'll learn more about what happened with her care coordination and why everything kind of fell off. After her EKG, I explained to this patient in simple terms how the heart works, what causes AFib. I always end up pulling my hands like this and I'm like, so this is your heart normally. This is your heart right now. And we do this. Anyway, you know, you know, relate everything to either, I mean, I live in the South. I relate everything to a car or a water hose or some sort of mechanical feature because we're very hands on people and that helps. Um, so find out about your patient population, your demographics that you're working with and how, how things can best be explained to them. Sometimes even helps if their career is like, you're like, oh, you're an engineer, you get it. And if, if, if one part of the system breaks down, you're going to end up with something stuck somewhere, you know? Relate to the person that you're working with. Um, I explained to this patient in simple terms what causes the AFib and what the risks are. Resume the metoprolol. I did not res- did not do her diltiazem for full, for fear of bradycarrhythmia. That's smart. I, as a primary care provider, am pretty chill about metoprolol. Past that, I'm like, I'll send you to cardiology. So getting her back on her rate control, her metoprolol was very important, important. It's not going to drop her heart rate as much. Um, diltiazem is a, is a little more tricky. So I, I would be comfortable with starting metoprolol and sending her to cardiology exactly like this provider did. The cardiologist did put them back on diltiazem, scheduled a stress test. Um, the primary care provider followed up with the patient after labs and found that she had not had any palpitations in one week. I think the metoprolol helped with her rate control. After her nephrectomy, she had quit taking her regular medications, including beta blockers, diltiazem. It apparently had also been previously prescribed Coumadin and had failed to follow up with the PCP. Her medical non compliance must have contributed to this AFib and how she was feeling. This may have been a case of poor communication, misunderstanding or unclear or ignored discharge instructions. The transition from a specialist or a surgery or a hospitalization can be so tricky if it is not properly um communicated with the patient. Patients will remain on medications that are inappropriate for them to remain on for months to years. Um, after being discharged from the hospital, uh, patients will not. Uh, patients will not realize that they're supposed to follow up with both their primary care provider and their specialists. It, the, the, the transition is very tricky, there are lots of programs out there now that will have like triage nurses that will call patients who have recently been discharged to kinda go over their discharge instructions again. Um, try to make sure that they understand what they're supposed to do, who they're supposed to see, make sure they have follow-up appointments and transportation and all those things. But sometimes that's just not available for the patients and they kinda fall off the wagon, especially if they weren't already previously established with a primary care provider. Those are the people that kind of get left behind and get confused with their medications, so. Recently did a resume for somebody who did their DNP project on changing protocols related to like medication reconciliations and instructions when they're leaving the hospital, and I thought it was a great, a great project for her to have completed for her DNP. So I had one other thought and I'm hoping it's going to come back related to this. Oh, another thing, like describing, that's kind of a role of a primary care provider is if they're put on medications that were only appropriate for them to be, uh, on during a recovery process following the hospitalization, we need to help with the process of describing medications, specifically things like PPIs. Patients will be put on PPIs when they're in the ICU, there's lots of studies that say this helps prevent, um, poor outcome, GI outcomes, when they're in ICU, under a lot of stress, intubated, on a ton of new medications, so they get thrown on a PPI. Really only supposed to be on the PPI when they're hospitalized and maybe thirty days after they get discharged. Somehow they end up on a PPI for ten years and then finally you kinda backtrack and look back and you, you see that and you're like, oh, we could have described this ten years ago. So make sure you're describing things, make sure you're following it, have, have some sort of system set up for your patients who have been hospitalized to be called by your MA or your nurse, just to make sure they understood their discharge instructions and are coming to see you. Um, I started caring for this patient only a few months before writing this case. She was a complicated patient because of her comorbidities and her uneven history of seeking care. Um, she was a poor historian and always came with her son or sister. At her first visit with me, I resumed all her hypertension medications except for the blood thinner. I could not determine from her or her family why a blood thinner had been prescribed. I requested medical records from the neurologist and the surgeon, I ordered blood tests, I made a follow-up appointment for the patient in ten days to discuss the lab results, however, she didn't come back till a month later because she had a complaint, palpitations and shortness of breath, empty medication bottles with the metoprolol and the diltizem. Still could never really figure out why the Couma, like didn't bring in a Coumadin bottle or anything like that. Imagine if she presented to the first appointment with the metoprolol, the dilt and the Coumadin. This, this provider would have been able to go, wow, you've got AFib and it's not being taken care of right now. Um, so she asked me if she needed to be taking them, at this second visit, the EKG revealed AFib. I revealed, I refilled the metoprolol, referred to cardiology to initiate her diltizem and warfarin as, as appropriate. Um, so the warfarin again needs to be managed by a facility that has a Coumadin clinic where they can go in and get their, um, levels tested. Whenever you, as a primary care provider, are working with a patient who is on Coumadin, you need to have the patient contact their Coumadin clinic to make sure they don't need to ju, adjust their medication dosage. There are standing protocols for how they should adjust their Coumadin when they're taking certain medications, specifically antibiotics. Lots of other medications too will, will interact with the Coumadin and require a dosage change, either to de, decrease or increase the dose, depending on how it's interacting. This is one of those CYP four fifty medications that interacts with everything, so everything will either make it work too much or too little. So you really have to make sure that they're contacting their Coumadin clinic, getting their INRs checked and adjusting their medication doses as needed. That was a side note on Coumadin, now where am I? The patient still had difficulty meeting scheduled appointments, further questioning on my part revealed she had many appointments, right? She's seeing a neurologist, a cardiologist, a PCP, she had a surgeon, she's got cancer and had great difficulty arranging transportation to and from her appointments. I called our referral clerk to arrange rides and he provided her with a transportation resource for all of her appointments. At her next appointment, her son accompanied her and both were cheerful and thanked me for this help. It is often the little things that make the biggest difference for our patients. That was another good one, you, you just have to be non-judgmental, some people, there's so many different reasons why someone is not taking care of their health properly. It could be anything, you know? So a lot of education, reassurance, getting other people in the family involved is definitely helpful as well, so. Oh, that was a lot, that was wonderful, does anyone have, uh, any questions for me? I'm, I'm happy to stick around after I turn off the recording to answer questions. Um, but, and super glad to have you guys here, I'm gonna go ahead and start my recording.